All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Welcome. Is everyone ready? No? Hi, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee. We are located today, Wednesday, September 12th. It is 6:32 PM, and we are at the Greenfield High School Cafeteria at 21 Bar Avenue in Greenfield, Massachusetts. Can we please have a roll call?
Committee Member Karen.
Here.
Committee Member Ekstrom.
Yes.
Committee Member Hollins.
Here.
Committee Member Ward. I'm showing his absent. Mayor Martin.
Here.
I am here. Committee Member Nunez.
Here.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. There was concern about your microphone, but I see that it is on. Yeah. Thank you. So, folks, we do have three draft minutes in our packet today. The superintendent just informed me that the draft minutes from September 5th, 2018, that there was a revision that was submitted before we received our packet. So, I'd like to hold on voting on those minutes so that we have time to review them. And that leaves us with draft minutes from July 17th, and draft minutes from August 8th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve minutes from Wednesday, August 8th, 2018?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second by Member Karen. Any discussion on draft minutes from August 8th? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving draft minutes from August 8th? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Member Hollins, what is? Okay, thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you. And is there a motion, please, to approve July 17th minutes? Thank you, Member Hollins. Mayor Martin. Any discussion on July 17th special school committee meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public this evening that is here to comment? Sure, come on up. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to talk. One second.
You won't need a timer. Doug Zellwien, 38 Forest Avenue, Greenfield. I want to continue with something I said last time. I can't label it a discussion, since nothing comes back. But my concerns about reaching into the corners of our town to make sure we're hearing from people. A number of you on the committee said that you had heard from a number of folks around the superintendent's contract and all that, which is great. I like that you were contacted, but my concern is that there may be people in town who don't feel comfortable reaching out so easily, especially people who maybe didn't have good experiences themselves when they were in school, or people who are, feel sort of distant. And I'm wondering, in terms of really pushing for more communication, if there's a way that, and this is easy for me to say, you'd have to do it, but to actually hold school committee meetings in other places sometimes, like at Lyden Woods, for example. I'm thinking of a number of people who can't get here, either because, again, they don't feel comfortable, or because they don't have childcare, because they don't have transportation. There's a law. My experience in other places is that, for some people, it's really hard to get to meetings. I'm assuming it's the same at Greenfield, and our public transportation system isn't what we maybe wish it would be. And so, thinking about ways to get to where people are, rather than expect them to come here. They clearly don't come here, since there's an empty room behind. So, thinking about ways that maybe the committee could find, find to get to other places where people gather, and have meetings in that way. So, that was really my comment. But I have a second one, a brief one, which is, after watching virtually every school district in the Pioneer Valley go through budget hell individually, and recognizing that it isn't an individual issue, it's a common issue, are there ways we can figure out how to connect with other districts to gather some power, some energy, so that it's not everybody for themselves, but recognizing there is a common problem that each district faces, that each town faces, and that maybe there's more power if we gather together? That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to our agenda. I have a brief report for the committee. It's actually included in your packet today, just a quick statement, and I'll read it off. Hello, committee. As the new year begins, I am asking for our committee to revisit our approach to governance, and to get clear on our priorities. Over the past several months, this committee has renewed our superintendent's contract, hired two new key administrators, has been engaged in contract negotiations with cafeteria workers and administrative assistants, evaluated our superintendent, endorsed new programming in special education, and at our Green River School location. We have advocated for the needs of our students through a tumultuous budget cycle. Our committee and administrators have withstood the impact of external pressures, including city-level staff and leadership changes, increased focus on school safety, rapidly changing communication and technology culture, and ongoing underfunding of public education at the state and national level. It's important that we pause for a moment to recognize our achievements, identify areas that need improvement, and keep our focus moving forward into the new year. Our committee has already participated in a self-evaluation. We've scheduled time on September 26th between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM to review and explore the self-evaluation, and explore additional committee input on operations and beyond. In order to prepare for the September 26th workshop, I've included in today's packet a list of committee operations and behavior for consideration, and policies requested to highlight. I'm not asking for vote or deliberation on these items today. I'm asking for committee members to begin thinking about our operations and our professional practice, and how our impact, how the impact of our individual behaviors has on the operation of the group as a whole. And we'll have some time for conversation on these topics and beyond at the workshop. In addition to these items that I've listed, committee members have also been provided copies of our Unit A and Unit C contracts. They will be provided later on. I've reserved space on today's agenda for a brief executive session to discuss strategy for negotiation for these two units, as well as have an update on our cafeteria workers. In short, excuse me, in short time, we'll be setting new superintendent goals for this year. I have asked the personnel and negotiations chair to be sure to keep the full committee informed about any draft goals for the superintendent, in order to ensure that all members are engaged in this process, and have time to weigh in on this important deliberation. I anticipate a vote on superintendent goals at our next regular meeting. The main focus of today's meeting is to review and discuss changes to the FY19 budget. Our superintendent, business manager, and the district's accounting team have been hard at work updating our FY19 budget to reflect changes made at the city level, discussion at the committee level, and updates in actual costs and numerical values of incoming and outgoing money. Depending on committee input and discussion, we may need to revisit this budget discussion at our next meeting. I actually anticipate that. As well, this will likely see some time at the next budget subcommittee meeting, which is scheduled for Monday. So, please look forward to the FY19 budget continuation, of the FY19 budget conversation. And at this time, I'll yield the floor to the superintendent for her message.
Thank you. And I'll begin my report this evening by noting that it is good to be back in Greenfield High School, and that we have had an excellent opening to the 2018-2019 school year. And it's always good to engage in the planning and reflection that takes place in the summer, but it's better to welcome back our students, and our faculty, and our families. So, we always have the feeling of a family reunion when everybody's back in town, as it were, and all the busyness that comes with that. I will bring to your attention a few things in your packet. The first is a bit of bragging, I guess. The Pigskin Preview is out, and it's on your table. And we have a terrific sports program here in Greenfield, and sometimes I think we could spend more time talking about our students and our athletics program, because for many of our students, this is a great part of their academic program, is their engagement in our athletics. And we have a few minutes here, we can think about the ways that athletics enrich our students' experience, and we are proud of our student athletes, and the commitment that they show. So, you can see that reflected here, with Greenfield featured on both the front and back of the Pigskin Preview, again, this year. In your report, you have a number of items that reflect the work taking place throughout the district. There was an update provided to the school committee on the first day of school, and I have included that for your packet. In addition, the monthly report goes through some of the activities that are taking place, including school visits, which have begun. And I do want to highlight that the Attorney General's Office has reached out to Greenfield in particular to highlight the terrific work happening in our prevention programs. And on this coming Monday, I will be at the Attorney General's Office as part of a press release and press conference, talking about the social-emotional programming, and in particular, drawing attention to the project here that the school committee voted and endorsed last year. That is evidence-based prevention curriculum that our schools are using, that our middle school and high school have engaged with, and that we recently recommitted to at the middle school in a planning meeting last week. So, we're really excited that there has been recognition of the unique programming, and the way that Greenfield is taking unique strides to meet the social-emotional needs of our students, and to really address the complete needs of our learners. This evening, we are here, and so we're not at the middle school, but there is, right now, a training taking place at the middle school for a number of families that are interested in having some opportunity to ask questions about the School Messenger app. So, I'd like to thank the technology team, there are a number of tech teachers, tech staff, and of course, our tech director, who are supporting that rollout, and providing hands-on training and support to families, right now, in fact. A few other things I'd like to highlight. We have talked a lot about safety, and as we sit here today, I'm very proud to announce that the district's efforts to launch some emergency preparedness have continued to progress, including the training of all staff at our all-staff convocation this year, with some basic first aid and preparedness, as well as some acclimation to the classroom and types of routine things that might occur, such as using the AEDs, Automatic External Defibrillators, that are in our buildings. We've worked to be in compliance with new laws and regulations, with great thanks to our health staff around these initiatives. And we started the school year by providing what may be life-saving skills to all of our staff, including cafeteria, custodial, secretaries, everybody in central office. And I think this is an important way that we know we can come together and make a difference through strategic, practical, common sense approaches. I'm very pleased to bring those tools into more students' hands, sorry, more staff hands. And I'm mentioning students also, because there's some effort to provide CPR and first aid training to our students as well. Meet and greets went very well. I saw many of you throughout the district. At our meet and greets, I was able to make it to, I think, four or so schools. It is a busy night, but it was great to see such a great turnout, including here at the high school, where it was just, the building was full. Every school I went to, parents were out, teachers were out. It's great to have such community engagement. I think the rest of my report is here. I won't read through it. These are always posted online. If you're watching at home, please know, we post all of our materials at the same time that the meeting is posted, 48 hours in advance. So, the materials are online as well, the packets are online. You can always follow along. And also included is a staffing report, which highlights some of our new hires. We did have a number of new hires coming into the district with this year's hiring season, and so, and some of them are transfers, but we've noted those staff members here. There is a number of pieces of local media coverage, which I have included, some information about the School Messenger rollout. And then, the final piece that's in your packet from my report, has to do with feedback on our convocation and all-staff safety training. And I'm very pleased to report that a number of our staff took that survey to provide feedback, so we can learn and continue to improve. And 84% of our respondents said that the training they received in that convocation was excellent or good, and something like 97% responded in the same way to the first aid and emergency preparedness training. So, it's important for us to hear from people and get feedback, so we can improve, and good to know that that's how folks felt. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the superintendent? Pardon?
Sure.
I appreciate your report, and your discussion about approach to governance, and I was wondering if sometime we could, in our talk, talk about what our belief is about people who speak to us. Is there, I understand that we can't respond and get into a dialogue with people who are making a public comment, but do we want, as a committee, to respond to people, ever? Or just let them talk, and then, just sometime, I wish we could talk about that, because people raise interesting topics, and they have interesting questions, and I don't know what happens after that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hollins. I've noted this, and this conversation will come up, and we discuss policy related to public comment. So, I think that that would be an excellent time to engage with that conversation, but I will look out for some other opportunities to do so. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Mayor Martin?
Thank you. For the superintendent, on the list of employees that you've hired, would you say that, are there any in here that have created new positions?
The only ones listed that are new positions are new positions that were approved in the budget cycle. For example, in last year's budget cycle, we approved a new second-grade teacher at Federal Street. So, you see that reflected here.
So, all of the rest are replacements? Rehires?
The vast majority are retirement, something like that.
So, it looks like we have 13 teachers, and we were trying to, during the discussion of the FY19 budget, discuss the possibility of increasing mental health services, and we have a .5 psychologist.
That's correct.
Is that the emphasis we intend to place on mental health services?
That was one of the positions that was approved. This particular individual did some internship work with us last year, and is very familiar with the district, and this is terrific value to our district.
Is that going to be enough? It seemed like there was a critical need for mental health services, rather than SROs. So, is this the extent of the additions to and for Mental Health Service Department?
I would be remiss if I said I think we have enough staffing in this area, but this was certainly one of the areas that we prioritize in terms of new positions. There were not that many new positions in this year's budget.
Okay. There are some new laws that went into effect July 1st, and one is the Pay Equity Law. Has the school department begun the survey for job descriptions, rewrite, review, and the new hires would be compliant with, or compliant to, the audit survey that is to be done?
So, we have begun work on this, and we have been in communication with Town HR on it. Our business manager has been beginning that work as well, in consultation with school committee attorney and counsel, to be compliant with that law. And I would defer to Steve for further details.
And then, the new Supreme Court decision, the Janus decision, has to do with prohibiting employers from collecting fee agency, or agency fees, and depending on which attorney you talk to, dues for a union membership. The presently, the city is in violation of that Supreme Court decision. Have you made any plans for identifying with the recommended procedure from the national attorneys? I say that because the Attorney General in Massachusetts says you don't have to do it, but other attorneys across the country, and those in Massachusetts say that you do have to do it. So, I just want to make sure the city is in the process of doing it, to complying with the Supreme Court decision. Wanted to make sure that the school department is also going to comply.
So, we work directly with Attorney Quinn for counsel on the Janus decision and other legal changes, and we have begun the work of incorporating that through the bargaining units, and then, looking at, it doesn't apply to individual contracts, so working through the bargaining units, but I won't comment on it more, because it relates to bargaining.
Okay. Thank you. Just one last thought. There's, I've sent a couple emails regarding the basketball coach, and athlete-scholar's opportunity for choicing in, as well as the selection process for coaches. So, I noticed we don't have any list of coaches and assignment. That might be all collective bargaining agreement, but the, I'm concerned how we're going to address this probably at our next meeting.
I don't know that it's a committee issue. I have a meeting with our athletic director and high school principal on Friday of this week, and a few individuals that have approached may have scheduled appointments with.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Any other, yes, Member Hollins?
I know that the official October 1 report hasn't been taken, because it's not yet October 1, but is it possible for you to comment whether the enrollment based on opening of schools matches what you thought? Do you have any comment on that?
I don't have today's count, because I spoke to our registrar yesterday, and she was doing a final tally. I would say, overall, we're up, and continuing to be on that enrollment increase in the trend. But again, where it falls on October 1, I think you're right, we still have a little time to go. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one more.
Mayor Martin?
I've just learned today that the, congratulations to the superintendent and the Greenfield School System, working with the FERCOG for the Safe School Grant, was received for $625,000, $125,000 for five years. The employees will be with the FERCOG, rather than with the school department, and that was a great partnership you made and deal. So, I think that to reinvigorate that program again, and get it back up is good for the Greenfield Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Martin, for sharing the news. So, today, we don't have any subcommittee minutes. It was requested to have a little bit of time to attend to the school, the subcommittee minutes. We have a new subcommittee secretary, so we are celebrating that today. It's quite fantastic. I've already received feedback from members, feeling very appreciative of having the support in subcommittee, to not have to take their own minutes. So, the written minutes will be to the committee as soon as possible. With that in mind, I do, I would like to move forward with some verbal reports from subcommittee. And I would like to start off with Member Karen, as Chair of Health, Safety, and Facilities. We do have a couple of items later on in our agenda that are related to the Health, Safety, and Facilities Subcommittee, so there will likely be further discussion later on. Member Karen?
All right. You always got to make me go first. We had a really great meeting. I learned a lot of, we discussed a lot of really important information. We actually had our facilities director there, and he was able to give us a lot of really wonderful information about some updates that have been going across on our fire safety, on our, you know, elevators, all that stuff that's been working, and making sure it's staying up to date. We also talked a lot about our Green River School proposal, and not so much about the proposal itself, because we're still moving forward on that, but a lot about the public understanding of the project, and how we can make sure they understand exactly what is happening, and why it's happening, and not that we're just deciding to spend money on a program we don't need, for no reason, that in fact, we need to put students in that building. It will cost us money if we don't. So, that was really, really how we're going to make that happen. And we really talked a lot about the parking situation at all of our schools, but specifically what's happening at Four Corners, and how we can improve. The parking lot is finished, it is beautiful, it has some wonderful spaces, it has really helped the traffic. I've witnessed, myself, monitors and staff making sure that parents are following and understanding the new rules, because it's not always clear, and they're out there engaging with the public and the community to make sure it's safe. And there's a couple of small things we could do to make that work better, but as we see on our agenda, that's something we would like to talk about later tonight, to really work on, making sure our schools are safe for all.
Thank you, Member Karen. Are there any questions for Member Karen at this time? Okay, seeing none. I have the next committee, I believe, Member Hollins. Cam tapped you to report out on the Budget Subcommittee.
Budget Subcommittee did meet on September 6th. Superintendent and the business manager were present. We clarified that the new total for the FY19 budget, for the local budget, is $18,575,000. There is a draft budget that was developed to accommodate, to align to the $18,575,000. We did not discuss at that meeting, and plan to at the next meeting, what came out of the budget, in order to reach that amount. And we talked about, I think we talked about all the work that Steve was doing as a new business manager. We talked again about the decision of the subcommittee members to meet twice a month and have short meetings, and we confirmed again that that's what the subcommittee wants to do. And Chairman Nunez was there and said, her thought would be that the first meeting that we have would be reviewing financial reports, so that when we got to the school committee meeting the following week, the budget committee would have reviewed the report. And so, the next, the next meeting will be the third, we will be meeting regularly first Wednesday of the month at 12:30, and the third Monday at 5:00. Wednesday of the month at 12:30, and the third Monday at 5:00, where we will discuss more what's in the budget, different questions anyone has. I think Chairman Ward wrote to people and asked what questions they might have that they'd like pursued in Subcommittee topics, and was looking forward hearing back if people had something specific. I'm not aware that we will be requesting any additional reports, just understanding what's in the budget, what's changing as we go from year to year.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Are there any questions for Member Hollins? Okay, thank you. And Member Alexander, anything to report on policy or personnel negotiations?
Okay, the Personnel Subcommittee is continuous work on the Superintendent goals, which we're meeting again on the 18th of September, where we hope to finish getting those goals finished for a recommendation to full committee for next month of October. That meeting is on the 18th. On the 25th of September, the Policy Subcommittee will begin work with the MASC advisors on the Policy Review Program, and that's what we got going.
Thank you, Member Alexander. Are there any questions for Member Alexander? Yes, Member Hollins?
I had a question on the policy review. It isn't, it's something that was in an email you sent that I just didn't understand. I did understand we were doing policy review, but in your email you said, "I think that the first set would be submitted," and it sounded like instead of reviewing our policies, a whole different set of policies was going to come forward for review, and I was just wondering if I misread what you wrote.
My understanding of the process is that the Policy Subcommittee will be working with the MASC, multiple representatives from the MASC, and today I spoke with Pat Carrera about the process because I wasn't 100% clear also about what would be happening moving forward. So she stated that what's been done is, first, all the policies have been, that we have, have been sent to the MASC, and at this point, they have begun review of A and B sets of policies, and she described the process in our meeting to look like the committee receiving MASC policy, looking at our own policy, and having the opportunity to review them side by side. That is my understanding at this time, and at the September 25th regular policy meeting, we will be going through the process with them and also scheduling specific dates for those reviews. Are there any other questions for Member Alexander? Okay, seeing none. We have some school committee representatives. Member Hollins, do you have anything to report?
The last planning and construction meeting was canceled, but we are meeting next Tuesday, I believe.
Thank you very much. And Member Exstrom, did the collaborative meet?
The collaborative is meeting at 6:30 on the 26th.
Thank you, Member Exstrom. Do we have student reps today? Are you our new student reps?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. Feel free to introduce yourselves and then just dive into your report. Sometimes members will have questions for you, sometimes we won't, and we are very pleased to see you and welcome you. We definitely missed, or at least I missed, having our student reps over the summer, so I hope you all had a good time, and thanks for coming.
Thank you. Can you hear me? My name's Morgan Blanchard, and I'm a senior.
Hi, my name's Iggy Pacilia. I'm a freshman.
So I guess I'll just start right off. I'm going to begin with sports. The cross-country team, both the boys and girls, won against their meet yesterday at Gateway, against Gateway and Westfield Tech. The next meet is next Tuesday against Palmer and Smith Vocational. Field hockey, they only have had one game because of the heat and the rain, but on last Friday, they won against South Hadley 5 to 1, and their next home game is against Westfield this Friday. Girl soccer, they've won their first two games, and it's kind of a big deal because they haven't won a game in two years, so go girl soccer! Their next game is this Friday against Mohawk. Golf has played two home games. They lost against Munson but won against Smith Academy, and their next match is tomorrow at East Hampton. The boys soccer, I think, lost today against Athol, and their next game is against Mahar tomorrow. Volleyball's first home game was yesterday, and they lost against Mahar, but their next game is tomorrow, home against Turners. Football has won their first game last week, last Friday. They won 26 to 18 against Woodstock Academy, and their next game is this Friday against Frontier.
Let's see. School pictures were the first week of school. Library club went on a field trip to meet three different young adult authors at GCC yesterday. Student councils had two meetings so far. We talked about volunteering to set up Warm the Children on Thursday. We won second place in the fair trivia, and we're also helping in the Green River Cleanup and participating in the Walk Out of Darkness on September 29th. The dance this Thursday was canceled because of a lack of pre-sold tickets. There's lots of new teachers this year, and we welcome them with their favorite snack or drink. And academic news, AP Euro just finished making their first project. AP Literature will analyze The Stranger next week, and AP Biology has already had their first week of, their first test, so. The Environmental Science Club volunteered picking up trash at the fair. The Key Clubs' first meeting is tomorrow, and the Triumph Music Honors Society, the National Honor Society and the French Club have already had meetings. Band performed a field show at the last football game of Green Day, and we won first place in the fair parade.
That is all.
Super, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for our student reps or comments? Member Hollins?
I really appreciate your coming. I'm sure everyone here does, and I really enjoy hearing about all the clubs and organizations and special courses, so thanks very much for such a great report.
Any?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to our first business item, the introduction of Karen Kuzland, is that correct? Our new Greenfield Middle School MSA principal.
So while Karen is coming forward, I just want to say a few words. Our new principal, Greenfield Middle School and Math and Science Academy, has jumped right in, and we're really delighted to have her with us. For those of you that may not know, Karen is an experienced administrator and educator, and we're very fortunate to have her level of talent and expertise. We conducted a survey last spring from the Math and Science Academy and Greenfield Middle School staff, as well as the parents, and we asked them to identify some of the qualities that were most important to them in our next leader, and they talked about being approachable, being outgoing, and providing fair and consistent discipline as some of the most important things, and that was pretty universally true about, across both the staff and the parent survey, and they talked about the importance of being a good communicator. So those were things that we were looking for as we went through our hiring process, which the committee was involved in throughout the summer. And in particular, Principal Kuzland brings a expertise in STEM, and because of her unique role in both the middle school and the Math and Science Academy, this was really exciting to the interview committee because of a excitement and a passion about science, technology, engineering, and math, and really bringing that dedication. In addition, she has background in health, and we're really excited about this because of the needs of middle schoolers and their social-emotional needs. So all in all, we're really delighted to have Karen with us, and I wanted to have her have an opportunity to just introduce herself to the committee and to the viewing public this evening.
Thank you very much for that introduction. I started my career in education over 27 years ago. The new, coming back to Franklin County, I started at Great Falls Middle School and Turners Falls High School as a physical education and health teacher, but I had the opportunity to attend UMass for my masters, and my masters is in math, science, and structural technologies. So before STEM, before it became STEM. So I then kind of progressed, stayed there teaching, continued on to my administration career where I was at West Springfield, and most recently at Javishbrook Middle School. So combined between teaching and science classes, as well as in the technology field itself. So I just had a great conversation with some of our teachers about STEM. It's nice when I can talk the language when they're trying to do some purchase orders and direct them to things, and I'm like, okay, that won't work with the Chromebook, so let's not spend the money on some of these other technologies. Let's look for, you know, the different pieces that will work and connect. So it's been really fun and exciting to get started. The energy and the vibe, I hope, is very positive, trying to, you know, increase the culture in the community, embracing the students as well as the faculty. So I want to thank you very much for offering me and giving me the opportunity to become part of the Greenfield community.
Thank you, Principal Kuzland. We welcome you.
Thank you.
I'm excited to have you as part of the team. Are there any questions or comments for Principal Kuzland at this time? Yeah, Mayor Martin?
Welcome to Greenfield.
Thank you.
Welcome back. I noticed that you had, we have a wonderful organization called the Greenfield Education Foundation that was started about eight or nine years ago. They've been very helpful in supporting those not-so-easy, off-the-shelf items that can help a class or a school. I noticed you were already approving one of the applications. Can you explain that? And what caught my eye was that you had signed off on it, and what a good idea already, so.
Absolutely. I was thrilled to get, when Anna Markefka came to me and approached me about bringing in 3D printers into the building, and I said to her, I said, "Oh, the book's in the back of my car with the 3D projects because it's something that I've taught," and she's like, "Oh, my goodness, I just couldn't even believe that that was even happening." So, and then I talked about Makerspace, so there's a lot of talk out there of things that we can do. So she wanted to bring this in for her classes in terms of things that she's doing with her CSL, and then we talked about how it would be able to be used throughout the building itself. So knowing that we already have the robotics club, we're talking bigger picture, of being able to really get the excitement from our middle school students so that they can gain that interest and then hopefully continue down the road, continuing that in their high school careers.
Yeah, that's wonderful. And coincidentally, we're working with a 3D printer project, and if you're a class or you can define a class that might be interested in partnering with this group of professionals, then it might be a teaching moment, as well as offer some, some help in putting that project together. And it's very interesting, we're, in case we all don't know, we are the birthplace of Lorenzo Lanzroth, and he invented the bee hive and the way to extract honey from a hive without hurting the bees and making it a lot easier to use the honey. So he did that 150, 160 years ago, so we're considering putting together a nice recognition of his, his efforts throughout the town involving bees and bee hives, and we're using the 3D printer to be part of that.
That'd be really awesome.
So that would be a great invitation, and if you can find a class and a teacher with the superintendent's involvement, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Looking forward to getting more information and finding out about how we can support that as well. Thank you.
I do want to echo the mayor's comments and say I attended the Greenfield Education Foundation meeting this afternoon, at which they approved that project, so there are two new 3D printers coming to Greenfield Middle School, but part of what the board was interested in was that the teachers' vision for this was not just having a printer, but also engaging students in the civics process of modeling some ideas for the skate park and being part of the community discussion, and using that 3D printer to take part in a bigger project that's part of the community here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Open their minds, and they can go everywhere, you know, the opportunity for them to think about coming up with inventions and different things, and that's what I'm really excited about being able to offer to the middle school students. So thank you very much.
Member Hollins?
Well, I'd like to also welcome you. You're taking on an exciting role, and I think your background's great. I read it when I had read that you were selected. I just wanted to say that one of the interests I have is really the fact that Greenfield Schools has positioned itself really as an equal-opportunity school. We don't have fees. We're very sensitive to the fact that we want our students to participate in everything without having fees, so I particularly enjoy that. I love that we have a broad involvement of students, not only in academic but in arts and clubs, so I just want you to know, I'm particularly interested in making sure there are enough music instruments, so if you ever find your shirt, be sure to holler.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right.
Thank you.
I will say just one final comment, which is, I've received a number of comments from the community, from parents and from staff, all very supportive and excited about Karen's leadership at the middle school.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, our second agenda item is an update regarding the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, otherwise known as the CPAC.
Good evening.
Hi.
Just gonna do a little seating arrangement here.
No problem.
Thank you. Welcome.
So I have been in correspondence with the CPAC and a little bit of the superintendent in order to have this, arrange this for this evening, and my intent here is really for the school committee to have an opportunity to ask any questions, and for those that are watching on TV to have some information about the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and I did request that our new Director of Pupil Services, Mr. Holloway, lead the way this evening. So thank you to everyone for coming, and I would love if you just start off with a quick introduction and then jump into your report.
Great.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Holloway. I'm the new Director of Pupil Services. It's really a pleasure to be here with you. I've really enjoyed my first days and weeks at the district. It's my honor to appear with you tonight before the President and Vice President of our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, Jody Falk and Mary Travers. As you know, special education is a collaborative, team-driven process. Students and families are at the heart of that process. Jody Berry and I have begun what I hope will be a long and productive dialogue about how to build an inclusive and supportive school district community for all students. I'd like to turn to them now, and they're going to provide a brief overview of our dynamic and really outstanding CPAC.
It is truly an honor to be here and to be with Matthew. We are excited for this year to be working together to support some of our most vulnerable children, both in district and out-of-district placements. The CPAC, again, Special Education Parent Advisory Council, is directed by the state of Massachusetts as an advisory group to the school committee, and we look forward to continually doing that directly with you, with Matt, who we're very excited to work with, and also because some of the folks on this board come to our meetings, which is great. For parents who might be listening out there, we are a resource for you. We provide support, advice, and advocacy. In the past year, we have helped parents find advocates, learn about their rights in an IEP or a 504 meeting, learn about local support agencies. We have many speakers who come to talk, and most importantly, we're an ear. Sometimes when you're out there, you feel alone, so please come to our meetings, and you're not alone. We're here to hear you and help you, and if we don't know the answers, we'll find them. So how do you, how do you find us? We meet every month, every second Thursday of the month at the YMCA. We meet every month, every second Thursday of the month at the YMCA, and we have free babysitting this year, so please come. I know, great thing. And it's from 6:15 to 7:45. Now, I know for my child, that's late for babysitting, or it's beyond his bedtime, but once a month, I find it's really important, and he has a good time. Also, you can reach us, myself, Jody, and Mary through our emails, which are posted every month, again, on the website, the school district website. You go under Families and Communities, scroll down, Special Education Parent Advisory Council, you'll find us. We're there. We're also hoping to go more into the schools this year, so we can really be a presence. Our whole goal is to be supportive, to help with parent concerns, and to be an advisory committee to give parent input to this body. Thank you.
This year, as usual, we'll have many speakers on topics that are important to families for throughout their child's lifetime. Beginning this November, we're having the United cerebral palsy of Berkshire County come to speak to us. We are starting a resource center, both physical and virtual, collating information about agencies, support programs, some parental wisdom, some personal advice, legal advice, and more, so that we can reach more families. Besides our monthly meetings, we'll be going into each school, as Jody mentioned, to learn more about the families that attend those schools and about the programs that each school has to offer, so that we can be more supportive of those families. We, of course, will continue to advocate for special education awareness and community inclusion in the schools and in the community. We will also continue to include other Franklin County school districts, whether they have an active CPAC or not, to create collaborative relationships through which we can share resources, information, and ideas. But thank you very much for having us, and again, you can reach either one of us through our emails, which are on the monthly newsletter and also published on the website. Thank you.
I'd just like to personally thank Jody and Mary for their role in the CPAC and to thank Matt for his quick embrace of the CPAC. This is really, truly, a win-win-win, in that the more active our CPAC is, the more parents are involved with the process, and the more our schools reflect the kind of goal that we have, which are inclusive schools that meet all of the needs of all of our students. So thank you so much for your leadership, and we're really pleased that our CPAC has continued to grow and expand, and this really has been a multi-year effort to try to sort of continue. It's like a little ember that we just keep adding little kindling to, and we're really excited, and this year is going to take off. So thanks.
Are there any questions or comments from members? Yes, Member Excham?
I just want to say, I'm so happy to see you guys here. I'm actually getting a little misty-eyed as you're sitting there. I just want to say to anyone who's kind of out there watching or in our audience, if you have kids who has an IEP or 504 or anything like that, I can't encourage you enough to attend a meeting. It will make your shoulders drop a little bit from your ears and maybe get that little wrinkle that's right here go away a little bit for a little while, and it's just such a wonderful resource, and I'm so thankful to see you guys.
Thank you.
Any other member comments or questions? Okay, I'll just say thank you, Ms. Falk, for reaching out, and Ms. Travers, it's a pleasure to meet you, and Mr. Holloway, always a pleasure to see you. Thank you to all of you. I did reach out to a couple of other school committees, just kind of asking about how they engage with their CPAC, and I won't name any names, but one of the responses that I received was, what's CPAC? So I am also very proud of the growth that we've seen with our CPAC, and that it continues to grow and support our community and help to advise the schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to do so.
Much appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move right on into our third business item, which is discussion on the FY19 budget. So there is a memo in your packet, as well as several other budget documents that are here in your packet. And Mr. Nembekow is here to walk us through the progress that's been made on the FY19 budget. And I did speak with him briefly before the meeting to see how far along he has gotten, he and his team have gotten, and the superintendent. And it doesn't seem that we will be able to endorse this this evening. However, I wanted to bring this to the table anyway for discussion, because this has been on our calendar, and this is an incredibly important obligation of ours to oversee our budget. So when Steve comes back, take it away. No pressure.
Okay. FY19 budget is done to the extent that we have a bottom-line number, as well as a number, and this is the page I was looking for, there we go, to the extent that we have a bottom-line number of $18,575,000. That is the number the city town council approved for the budget. In addition to that, we are putting an additional $3.7 million of funds, that's Circuit Breaker, School Choice, various other revolving funds, towards that number to get the $22.3 million budget. That represents the whole pie there. That includes, that 3.7 includes some grant funding, things like that of certain positions. So the total budget is $22.3 million. Of that $18.5 million is local appropriation, and then the supplemental or offset, what you'll see in the budget, is $3.7 million. In your packet, you'll see the FY18 budget, as well as the FY19 budget. The FY19 budget is loaded and equals the $18.5 million, so that now is a working document for all the principals, everyone out there, for you guys, in order to see how we're doing going forward. Some of the highlights of the FY18 budget that you'll see, that's in both formats, is an ending balance of about $70,000, which is about 0.4% of the total budget going forward. So that means that you guys did a very good job controlling costs, making sure that hiring didn't go awry, making sure that placements didn't go awry, and a whole host of other things that could possibly go wrong with this budget to increase the cost. So that means there was a lot of prudent exercise of fiscal responsibility throughout the year. Some uses that we could use for that $70,000, I know safety and security is always a big issue, so swipe cards, the PA system, I know that is a big issue in order to keep people informed of what's going on, as well as the safety buckets. So that was the thought process, is that one-time money should be used for one-time expenses, such as the swipe cards, the wiring, and the safety supplies. That brings us to another piece of what was in there. It's the revolving accounts. You have very healthy revolving accounts going forward. Even when you apply the money that is going to offset the budget, there's projected ending balance of around $2 million for next year. So it is very healthy going forward. However, those are one-time funds, and we want to be very careful about one-time funds to use for reoccurring expenses, such as people, you know, ongoing subscriptions, leases, things like that, because there will be a funding cliff at the end of that, because those funds won't last forever. And I don't want to be in a position, you don't want to be in a position, to go back to the town and say, well, we spent all our money, we need an extra $4 million, because that won't fly very well. So, given that said, both Superintendent and I know that monitoring those one-time budgets, monitoring those revolving funds going forward is very important because of that possible funding cliff at the end. The detailed budget, that is a work in progress. What you'll see there is me trying to kind of build the airplane at 30,000 feet, but it's coming along fairly well. You'll see the, in the first couple of columns, and I'll just walk through that, and if, you'll see the first couple of columns there, it's setting out each individual person, what they do, their step, their total salary, whether or not there's an offset to that salary, and what's the local salary. The blue column you'll see is a total, which will match what the previous company, TMS, came up with, that equals the $18.575 million. So that was the first step, was to create this baseline of funding, who's there, what they're doing, what each line item means, who belongs in each line item, and then have that equal to the TMS budget or that baseline budget. Now, a lot of changes have happened since that budget was made. Most notably, people transferring, new hires, people leaving. That'll be, that's the green part on the right-hand side, and that's really the work-in-progress piece, because as of today, we still have some openings, we've still made some new hires. As I'm finding people and adding them in, we don't have them in the payroll system yet, so it's hard to determine what they're being paid. You have to go back through the paper to figure that part out. So that is the work in progress, and that should be ostensibly done by Friday, which then you'll have in your packet for Monday, in order to look at that. And what I would suggest at Monday's meeting is that we go through this line by line. It's tedious, it's long, but it'll help everyone to understand the format, where the format's going, how that format will help build the FY20 budget, because building this FY18 budget when it was built, FY19, FY19 as built, will then lead into the FY20 budget, which, you know, that's coming up very quickly. We're going to have to have a, probably a working FY20 budget in the next two or three months here, in order for you to start deliberating and deciding what your priorities are. So the FY19 is coming along, and what we've done is basically reconcile all the accounts to that, getting the new people in, and then reconciling the 3.7 million offsets going forward. And at that meeting, what I'll have is a breakdown of how those offsets were made. I have the revolving accounts right now. It's a matter of figuring out the grant funding going forward, who's in the grant funding, and making sure that those folks are in the appropriate offset categories. So it's a lengthy process, but this is kind of a one-time deal. Once this is set up, it won't be as bad going forward, so, which is good. As with the FY19 budget so far, I don't see any red flags. Things seem to be going fairly well, and as the FY, but it's still early. You know, it's early in the budget process. We'll know, we'll have a better sense of anything that's happening with that in the next, probably around November-ish, when we can throw some more encumbrances, get those encumbrances in, and revise those encumbrances to match up with exactly who's been hired. So that will be kind of the ongoing project going forward, but, you know, there's a lot of information here, and if you have any questions or concerns, let me know.
Thank you, Steve. Superintendent, did you want to comment at all at this point?
No, Steve and I have been, there's like a fly thing happening, is to test our quick wits here. Steve and I have been working on this budget. I think Steve has done a great job of getting up to speed. It is challenging handing off from one creator of a budget to another, and my request to Steve has been the consistency and the clarity in the budget documents, because it is a transition for committee members. It's also a transition for administrators. So on our end, we've worked to loop the administrators into the process, to circle back through, to make sure that communication is there, so that what we're communicating to you, although it's in process, is getting that double, triple checking on our end, so that we are conveying a real-time document to you. I would say it's approaching complete, as Steve has indicated, and so, you know, confident that this will be an accurate document up to the newest hires by early next week, when we're meeting in Budget and Finance. And I'm really excited that this budget format helps the committee, I think addresses some of the requests that we've seen in the past from the committee. It's really straightforward, it lays out a lot of information, and again, this is online and available, so I think our public accountability here is quite high.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Excham?
I love a spreadsheet. And knowing, let's see, having done a million spreadsheets and knowing how difficult it can be for people when they're interpreting, can I just make a couple of suggestions?
Sure.
And the response not be, really, sister, why don't you go do it yourself? You might want to sort stuff, like the paras by step.
Okay.
And the teaching staff by position, just because then during the meeting, people won't be hunting around to see, wait, here's one, grade one, here's another one down here, just because they'll get caught up in that minutia, at least someone like me who likes spreadsheets will.
Gotcha.
Just to make it go faster.
No, that's
Don't have to do that.
Easy enough to do.
Just a suggestion.
Easy enough to do.
Exactly.
At our budget meeting, we had asked what had changed from the budget the school committee passed to the new draft budget that's a lesser amount, and the information wasn't available then, which is understandable, but I did go through both budgets so that I would understand what changed. And I wanted to mention a couple of changes that I am concerned about. The way we have functioned as school committee is that the change, the MASCE and the School Business Administrative Association both say in their materials that the budget document is a policy. And going back through our records, anytime there's been a change to the budget, whether it's adding line items, deleting line items, format, whatever, it's been a decision of the school committee to change the budget format. So one of my concerns was, a few years ago, a cost center, I'll call it, that was instructional electives for the high school. It had been $250,000 for quite a few years, and that cost center was eliminated. That's gone, so I'm not, but my worry was that the $250,000, this was by a vote of the city council and the school committee both to have that, so that that money was always there for instructional electives.
Instructional elect, I'm not sure.
At the high school.
What are instructional electives?
It would be a non-core elective course, could be an art course, a music course. Could be pottery, it could be the students-wanted yoga, it could be a quarter course, a half-year course. But what I recall is that the principal primarily figured out what that was. It was $30,000 for supplies. But for years, it was set, and the reason it was set is so that it would always be there and it wouldn't go away. So the cost center went away, and I, at every year that I've been on the committee, would say, that really worries me, because eventually, that money's not going to go there, and we want to vibe. This school district requires quite a few elective courses.
Member Hollins, what's the question?
Okay, the question is, I noticed that we went from $250,000 to $160,000 to $114,000 last year, and in the new budget, that instructional elective is down to $14,600. I just want to mention that concerns me. And the other thing that, I know you didn't construct the budget, I'm just saying that I finally went through it. I have an ongoing concern about teaching reading and making sure at the high school level, it's usually tutors, I don't know, but most of the lines for tutors have been reduced, that I could see. Regular tutors went from $39,379 to $10,000. Regular day tutors in another line went from, looks like it went down from $15,000 to zero. In another line, special ed tutors went from $15,000 to zero. I'm just concerned that we have reading services at every level. And the other thing I noticed was that the added district tuition went up $300,000, so that seems like a good thing. But those few But those few changes that I saw, and library supplies at Federal Street School, that line item seems to have been eliminated altogether. I think it had 5,000 in the old budget. I had another comment.
Sure.
In your memo, you suggested with the one-time money, a wiring for PA system for 50,000. I don't agree with your rationale about how to use it, but-
No, that's fine.
There's an unexpended borrowing, capital borrowing for 155,000 for PA systems, and I checked today. This is the difference, isn't it?
What was it for? I don't care.
Intercom systems. So I went over to the treasurer's office, and I asked if there was a unexpect, expended. So that was the information I got today, and I was just going to say that I hope we would check for any borrowing that's not expended yet before we would-
Yeah, I, actually, I did look into that, and the, from what I understand, the balance on that was $5,000.
No kidding?
Yeah.
She looked it up today and told me 155,000.
Yeah, I guess we'll have to, I'll, I'll circle back with the treasurer.
I don't, I don't know the answer. My thought was, if there is any money like that, we should spend that-
Oh yeah, I, I totally agree. Capital project first, school budget second, so.
That's all.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Any other questions or comments from committee members? Mayor Martin?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, just to comment on that 155,000, so that comes under an account that we have the, authorized on issued for the, for the city, and that has been inaccurate for about eight months.
Okay.
So we'll, we're still working on getting the exact numbers. The, first, I want to thank you very much for taking that critical time period, and working with the city, and thank the superintendent for allowing that. You did a fantastic job, and just coming in with your expertise and experience was, was perfect for all of us, and I do appreciate that. My only thought on, on your presentation is that you're gonna prepare something in more detail for Monday, can, can we increase the font?
Yes, sure. I'll get bigger paper.
I agree with the man on this.
Or I gotta get bigger glasses. So also, let me, let me comment on, the city cut roughly 350 to 400,000 dollars out of, I mean, the council cut 350, 400,000 dollars out of the budget during the budget season. And for the record, seven departments were affected on the city side. Three of them were crippled, and four of them were red flagged. So we have serious issues with, with that movement of money at the council level and the 11th hour. And if the councillors are out there, they should understand how this happened, 'cause they were there. And we can review that at the next council meeting. Going to your revolving accounts. During that discussion, we had, I had stated that at the end of the year, this is back in February and March and April and May, I said at the end, in June 2019, we would have over $2 million in the revolving accounts. And from your projections and the expected revenues from those separate accounts, you showed 2.14. So I wanna say, thank you. That's important.
[laughing]
It's important in that every year, we go through the same frenzy about something might happen, we have to have the money, something might happen. Well, we do it every year. I've only been here nine years, and, and it's never happened. But if it did, we are always available for crisis cash from the city or other accounts that exist for the school department. So under your FY19 revenue, you've got 1.825 under that column, and then the prior year revenue was 2.024. So roughly a couple hundred thousand dollar reduction in revenues from year to year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then for FY19 budget, we used 1.58 million?
That, plus the encumbrances on the other side, the 1.087.
Okay, so 2.59. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yep.
So this is, the revolving funds are in good shape, as you mentioned earlier. The, I haven't had a chance to go through this, and, and I know you're gonna change it and bring it closer, but I think you've done a great job just from 30,000 feet. In the transportation contract, who is negotiating the contract? And are we participating in an RFP from someone else, or are we doing our own? And have we determined routes and, and number of years of the contract? I know that-
Actually, in the past two weeks or so, I've learned a tremendous amount about greenfield transportation, and there's, right now, the Franklin County business managers is putting out a, developing a regional transportation bid. So I, I think it would be smart of us to, to go ahead and join them and, and bid that out. Our contract is up June 30th of 2019. The best thing to do, and the best way to make sure that we get responsive bids, is to get that on the street by November, December-ish, so that only gives us a couple months. If we were to develop it on our own, it would take at least a couple months to put that together. So I think the Franklin County bid process is a good way to do it. If not, we could develop our own bids, go out by ourselves, and the November, December timeline would hold with that.
Right, so my only concern is that 10 years ago when we did this, or eight years ago, the, the bidding was, was perfected by the bidders, so that some school districts received a bid from one company, and the other school districts received a bid from another company, and when you reviewed all the bids, nobody doubled up in any district. So I'm concerned that, that's, we're not getting the best buck for our dollar. The, is there a way to do an alternate with the Franklin County bid and include greenfield only?
Sure, sure, 'cause you don't have to, you could do your own bid, separate of the Franklin County bid, and you don't have to, you choose the bid that you want, so you don't have to take whatever they bid.
Okay, and then I think first student doesn't bid, so I don't understand why that's the case. I know several years ago, five or six years ago, they went bankrupt, but-
Yeah.
They've been back in business for four, five years. So it's, I think, if we can look into that, just to see how that might impact our cost. There is, on the FY18, I noticed under 13354200, the contract transportation bid, it was 554,135, and then FY19, we've got 512,000. So it would appear it went down, but I don't think that's the case. So could you just check that?
Yeah.
One was on F9, FY19 is page eight, and FY18 is page nine.
Okay.
I think, Member Hollins mentioned that the, how different was this, this new FY19 budget compared to the one presented and approved by the school committee? So are we with the same line items? Have we changed line items or changed account numbers?
I, I have what was given to me, so what I do know is that TMS left a comprehensive budget for me to, to work with. So these line items are exactly the same as what TMS came up with. So any of those numbers, any of those line items are exactly what they had going forward, and to the best of my knowledge, that was what was presented and, and all that. And so, that at one time was 19, 20 million. I, I think that was the, the brought-forward budget at that point, and then it's been scaled back, but none of the line items have, have been changed.
Okay, so then we would see what was reduced from the original school committee budget to the one-
Yeah, it's, it's not necessarily as much a reduction as to what was shifted over to the increase, the 400,000 increase from the town, as well as the 400,000 increase in revolving funds or, and offset funds.
Okay. Thank you. The fringe, the fringe for FY18, we had some communication during the end of last year of, during the FY18 budget, and I don't know if we have submitted a, a fringe payment to the town yet for FY18. I would think it-
For last year?
For last year.
Okay, I, yeah, I can check on that.
Okay, and then we have email communications that I can forward to that was dealing with maybe TMS and with HOE, going back two years, in that there is a priority for the scaling of the repayments of the fringe benefits from the grants and so on, so probably you and Lane will be able to-
Yeah, yeah, we'll-
Get into that in the future.
We'll figure that one out.
I appreciate that. And if there is a, already a fringe payment, would it be in the FY18 end-of-year budget?
It would be in the FY18 end-of-year budget. However, I, I'd have to track down exactly, you know, when it was made. I'm assuming it was made, but you wouldn't see it in the general fund budget, 'cause those fringe payments are, come out of the grant account. So, so that's a separate accounting piece there.
Thank you, Stephen. And one last comment. No, I already discussed that, I have no last comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Any other questions or comments from committee members? Member Exstrom?
I actually, and this may not be the appropriate place, I have some questions about the numbers that are associated. Should we do that at the subcommittee? Yes?
Um, it's-
I don't have a problem with it.
I'm not entirely sure, it, because I don't have as much information, so can you give an example? I mean-
Well, so for example, um-
Like the actual values?
Yes.
Reflecting like actual salaries?
Yes.
Is that what, okay.
And that can, I absolutely can wait.
I think that you should ask your question right now.
Okay.
And then if there's a need to wait, we can wait.
Okay. I, so there's a, what I see is, there's a singular social worker at North Parish. That's what I'm kind of finding across all of these. And I'm not saying one thing or another, we pay a social worker at North Parish 71,366 dollars as a salary?
That, do you know what line item that is on the left-hand side?
Uh, 661.
661, okay.
North Parish is only classes in session four days a week?
No, that's five days.
It is five days? It used to be that there wasn't anything on Fridays, that's why.
That, that is a Unit A teacher-certified position, and so that would be a Master Step 12.
Right, so the column K gives the information about-
No, I, I understand that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other, Member Hollins?
Yes, I have a couple more, since that's our-
Okay.
Agenda topic. I just wanted to mention that some years ago, I think it's the last transportation contract, which was five years ago, it was bid by, you probably know this, it was bid by the vocational school business manager who did it for the county.
Russ Kruger's, yes.
And the way it was put together was a county-wide, just what you're talking about, and also individual bid for each district.
Okay.
So you might want to check that it was done that way. I went to talk about format-
Mm-hmm.
Just 'cause it interests me. I agree with the larger font. It's really helpful to have a date on each new version which you do and page numbers which you do, and at some point, we had line numbers, so if somebody said I had a question, that you could just say what's-
There are, there are line numbers here.
Are there line numbers?
Yeah.
Oh, good. And I went back through our meeting minutes. We, we did spend about a year talking about revolving funds, and we developed a whole policy on them that was based on what came in in one year and what was gonna be saved. It was by year. And then we had a long discussion on format of how we would like the report. I think it was repeated five times. It's in the minutes somewhere, I don't think, I'm the one to probably pull it up.
Actually, the, this is the format for the revolving funds.
This one?
That one right there, that is the format. The only thing that I've added is the FY19 revenue, FY19 needs, and FY19 balance, because the remaining balance gives you part of the picture, and what you're gonna wanna know is, well, what's it gonna look like at the end of the year?
I think if you added things that make it make more sense, great. I just wanna make sure that the columns that we asked for there, because what I remember, it was clarifying what year the money came in, since our policy is based on holding money that comes in in one year over. It was structured that way, and I didn't see that, but as long as you have a copy of what we voted and it matches, I'm good.
Yeah, this is exactly, exactly what's been used in the past.
And, and I also went back and looked up when the school committee, I guess I'm old-fashioned, I think the school committee takes a vote, that's still the vote, till another school committee takes a different vote. But I went back and I looked at when the school committee had a long discussion on the format they wanted for a new budget. And I, I have that with me, but it was two years, the actual, which you actually have in one report, two years actuals, so you could see in each line, what, what did you actually spend, and then the current year, your budget, and then-
And actually, what I would do is, that, that hasn't made it into this large format yet, I'm focusing on what people are changing and things like that, but what I found helpful in the past is not only the actual expense, but what was the budgeted expense for that year. So if you go to FY17, what was the budget, what was the actual?
Right, so that might be useful if I send it over, but the idea at that time was, you just can't look in one year and understand whether what you're budgeting is sensible, so-
Exactly.
You need to look at your actuals going back.
I totally agree with that, yeah.
But there was a, there's a whole big couple of paragraphs about that-
Okay.
At some point. That's it.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, and we will look forward to Monday. For folks, you know, it's a subcommittee meeting, so it's not required for us all to attend, just a reminder of that, so, thank you very much. Our next business item is a recommendation that's coming from the Health and Safety and Facilities Subcommittee, and this was a recommendation for the full committee to vote to add to its agenda, to the subcommittee agenda, clarifying school, road, and traffic safety by collaborating with police, fire, DPW, and pertinent school and city personnel, initially focusing on Four Corners School, in order to enter into deliberational, entertain a motion to do just this. Would anyone like to move this?
Someone.
Is there a second? Thank you. I will actually yield the floor to Member Karen to be able to elaborate a little bit on this recommendation coming out of Health and Safety.
So, it sort of started as a conversation in the spring about our road safety at all of our schools, including GMS, Four Corners, New Inn, and Federal. And we kind of stepped back to allow some work to get done at Four Corners, 'cause it seemed to be our most pressing issue. And they worked really hard over the summer, got the parking lot paved. There was some transitional problems in staff transitions with the town engineer, so a little bit of miscommunications perhaps, that we, as a committee, I'm not speaking for the principal or school staff, thought things were going to be done, because from prior conversations that didn't end up being done. Not necessarily immediate threats to safety, but things that needed to be looked at, including parking right next to the school entrance, making visibility low for people crossing. They're originally in the plans, I believe, and I hope I'm not misspeaking, there was a plan to make a line going into the traffic at Four Corners. Right now, there's just a line delineating the drop-off lane, and arrows, if we thought it would be safer if there was an actual dotted line delineating the lanes. And quite quickly, after school started, I began hearing from residents within the first six hours. So one of the things that was discussed with the town engineer at the time was that it's actually illegal, and I did not have a moment to pull up the- it's actually illegal, and I did not have a moment to pull up the policy to park within so many feet of a school driveway. And so he had mentioned that he planned to line off 25 feet on either side of the entrance, and that never happened. And that was actually really important to a lot of the residents, because what's happening is people are parking in front of their driveways. I witnessed it the other day. A resident couldn't get out of his driveway through there. So what actually became apparent to us is it's not an issue the school committee can solve. It's an issue a superintendent can solve on her own. We need town support, fire support, police support, and making sure people are obeying the traffic laws. It's extremely difficult at that time of day. So we thought perhaps getting all of us together at the same time to make a plan was the important way to go. So that's why we were hoping that that could happen.
Thank you, Member Karen. Any questions or comments for Member Karen? Member Hollins?
Ha, the mayor's going first.
Mayor Martin?
We did just discuss that last Tuesday with DPW regarding the 25 feet on Ferenti Avenue on both sides for primarily bus turning, coming in and out with the cars parked right at the lip of the driveway, pretty much. So it's in the works. I don't know, I can check, I can check tomorrow, see when it's planned. They're pretty much, you know, close of the season to season, so they're trying to take care of a number of items. But that was, that was addressed.
Good. Thank you.
I'm sorry it wasn't completed.
It was a long project. It took a lot of work and coordination. Sometimes little things like that have to wait.
Member Hollins?
I just wanted to put, Katie, one of the reasons we discussed and in our subcommittee voted to present a motion is to make clear that the school committee wants the subcommittee to now, having done the parking lot, pursue the traffic issues. Because before, we were just working on the paving and talking about that. So this, if it's voted, it'll be a clear message that the subcommittee will pick up these issues that involve traffic safety.
Thank you, Member Hollins. I did have a little bit of confusion related to the language of the motion that was conveyed to me. And, but the way that I comprehended it is similar to how both of you have explained, that really, the subcommittee is looking for a comprehensive discussion on school, road, and traffic safety, and not just at Four Corners, but just starting with Four Corners.
Starting with Four Corners, may I make another comment?
Sure.
I think we talked about several ways that these different parts of the community can come together to actually solve this, these ongoing issues of traffic and whatever. And after discussions, it seemed like the way that made the most sense was for the subcommittee to take it on, because then we could make sure it got done, kind of. But we, it wasn't a clear directive yet for the subcommittee.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Mayor Martin?
So, I'm concerned with the chain of communication. Frankly, every subcommittee in the city cannot address every department in the city and have them come to their meetings. We receive requests from a number of different subcommittees, we can't do it. So that's why I put in an executive order in several years ago to prevent this, the mass attack on all the departments for their resources and their time by individuals as well as subcommittees. The council didn't like that, and I have removed that. I have withdrawn that executive order about three months ago. And the departments are bombarded with individuals and others, the subcommittees, looking for coordination to do things. So I don't think a subcommittee of the school committee should be involved in contacting the chief of police, the chief of the fire department, and, and any other director of DPW to meet at a driveway and discuss a future plan or future request. The superintendent of schools has indicated, please contact me if you want to talk to any teacher, any principal, any administrator. So I think that the professional reciprocity for that same type of communication with the city is, is well within reasonable communication paths that we should take. And I have no problem working with the school committee addressing an issue. You know, I missed a couple of meetings, I went on vacation, grew a beard, but, but the, to, you know, have that recommendation to go to the mayor, who can then go to, can you look at Four Corners? Can you check out Newton Street? Have we finished the stairs? You know, and so on. So, but it's really, really difficult for the individual department leaders to respond to so many requests. And they also respond to constituent issues as well.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Some of this did come to mind for me when I was first learning about this particular issue. As a recommendation coming from our subcommittee, I felt the need to put it here clearly on our agenda. And I do have, I think that there are a couple of things going on here, and one of them is that it sounds like there needs to be some discussion, some public discussion with the school committee, and I'm not sure who should be in attendance, but I think that this is well within the purview of the Health, Safety, and Facilities Subcommittee to kind of take a look at these issues that our community is bringing to our members and citing that our principals have even brought to us as issues that need to be addressed. So there's that, which I think is okay. And then there is what you're speaking to, Mayor Martin, which is, it can be problematic when many people are reaching out to department heads and trying to coordinate these meetings. So I'm interested in not only allowing space for us to have a public discussion on this, but also interested in your input, Mayor Martin, because I think it, it really does sound like this needs to be a team effort in problem-solving. And, yeah, are you saying that you have a suggestion? I just, yeah, I just think that we should be looking for a motion and an action that is going to satisfy everyone. I'm seeing Superintendent first, and then I saw Katie, and then back over to you.
So I want to support in general the idea of coordination, and I think the intent of this motion was to raise the issue as far as an area where the school committee obviously needs to collaborate with individuals outside of the school committee purview, and to sort of bring that forward for the appropriate channels of communication. So I support that. And I do want to raise one thing that hasn't come forward so far, which I hope to address in this as well, which is that we have a principal of a school who's, I think, serving in some aspects to try to bridge the gap, and has been fielding concerns, questions from neighbors and abutters and so forth. And so I, I think it would be to everybody's interest to be very clear about who's handling it, who's the point person. And this was an area, in addition, that the school committee infused $15,000 to support the project, and really used academic funds to make sure that this project continued so that the safety needs could be met. So I'm very much in favor of a clear solution if the mayor wants to propose a sort of communication structure that makes sense. I think that would be a relief to school staff in addition.
Member Karen?
Superintendent Harper pretty much said what I was going to say when we were making this motion. That was very clear to us, that we weren't exactly sure how we should go about making it happen, and that we were communicating with the superintendent, and that she would then communicate with those who needed to be communicated with so we could make this happen. As she also said, the principal of the school spent many, many hours dealing with community members and other people, whose concern about this was, what is happening? Why are we happening? What's going on? When's it happening? How is it happening? Who's doing it? And it was not how we thought, it's not how a principal of school should spend the majority of his time. So it is a concern to the school committee as well as the town. And that's all, and I hope to hear a great communication plan, personally, because it's unclear what we should do.
I'm not going to develop the plan.
Well, we can work together.
So the communication is make a request to, from the school committee to the mayor, or from the superintendent to the mayor, and then bring in the resources that are going to address the issue. For residents and neighbors, speaking with the school principal is really not the quickest way to get the job done. I mean, contact, and they do. Residents and other interested parties in town, contact the DPW director directly, contact the central maintenance directly, the rec. director directly, fire, police chief directly. So we receive sometimes friendly, sometimes not-so-friendly emails from people who are not satisfied with the schedule, or the paving, or the, whatever the issue might be. So, I mean, I think that's a reality of dealing with so many diverse people in town.
Member Hollins?
I have a recommendation for amended wording, but I'd like to just explain what the meeting was like, because it was very oriented toward problem-solving, and someone would say, it would really be great if we'd have a sign over here, that would really help. And then someone would say, oh, that would be DPW. And they said, well, we really might get, you know, a crossing guard might be the solution. Oh, no, that's the police department. They, they do something. And we really need like a certain number of feet because of emergency for the fire trucks. Well, wait a minute, there wasn't a way to solve it without talking to different people, because everyone has a piece of it. Even who paints the line, that would be DPW. So clearly, we're just school. But how about if this was reworded? I think, as Katie said, the main issue is to get this resolved, because it goes on every year, and for someone to take the lead, figure it out. So would this be helpful if it said, for the Health, Safety, and Facilities Subcommittee to add to its agenda clarifying school, road, and traffic, traffic safety by collaborating with and through the mayor about? I mean, the mayor's point is that, do we go through the superintendent to reach people in the school department? Do we go through the mayor to reach?
If I may.
Sure, Mayor Martin.
Since that was addressed. The, we have several hundreds of thousands of dollars in process for complete streets, sidewalk repair, ADA pedestrian ways. There's just a lot going on. So if, if we haven't got there yet, then it's not going to do any good to increase communication. You know, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up. It's all based on schedules, time, resources, funds. We, I think we've addressed with, between George, Central Maintenance, and Don and Nick, and DPW, a number of issues at the, at the schools, a number of different schools. So regarding paving, driving, sidewalks, stairs, a number of outside issues. So I think you ought to either make it part of your capital and see if it gets through, or if it's a large project, or if it's, if it's Health and Safety as you propose, then a quick note to the memo typed to the mayor, who then sends it out to the appropriate party that has resources and funds to take care of it.
Did you have any? Yes, Superintendent?
I just want to add one piece, which is, I think there's a further element of intent to respect the DPW or the engineers' expertise by actually inviting them to be part of the solution. So I think the committee was not looking to direct town resources so much as to invite a discussion. So, for example, there was like, well, should we invite the following five people from the town to have a conversation about the best way to solve this, since it's bordering school committee property, but not actually school committee jurisdiction? It affects the school, but it's not actually owned by the school. Should we invite all of these people? So a memo would be useful if there was a clear outcome. I think the committee was just not yet at a clear outcome, and was looking for some collaboration. So maybe the ideal here would just be that there is some avenue that the mayor can, is better aware of their workload, schedule, et cetera, and could help facilitate some conversation so that a clear decision is clear.
I think Mayor, Member Karen's comment earlier about the transition, where, you know, we have a director in, in transition, and we have an engineer who's departed, so I think that was all part of the 25 feet, and that's why it was brought up by the interim director a couple, the last couple of weeks.
So we have a motion on the table. And I'm wondering what we want to do with that motion.
I'm not, this is a personal opinion of one committee member of the subcommittee, but I'm, I'm not sure that we need to make a very clear directive at this point. I think I do want to take this on, it is something we need to do, but if we can approach this by emailing the mayor, then that's a solution I'm willing to try. I'm having a hard time with that, because I don't think I always know what's, I don't know what's happening on every project in the town. That's not my job, so I can't know if something's coming or not, except to send an email to ask. But if we don't, as the superintendent said, we don't have a solution, then I don't know how we get a solution all on our own. That's about a street that we don't actually have any plan on, but we're hearing from our students, our parents, and our community members about. So that's where I don't know what, if we don't have a clear directive to take this on, then I'm just sitting down there emailing the mayor every day. Well, what do you think we should do about this? What do you think we should do about this? I don't think that that's a wonderful use of his time either.
Yes, Superintendent?
It would be a good town-school discussion as well, so that we can better coordinate, and I would just suggest that as an avenue. And I think Health and Safety is going to continue to keep this on your agenda no matter what, whether or not there's a vote of this committee. I think there's significant interest on Health and Safety Subcommittee, so it certainly seems like a topic that we'll be able to revisit.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Hollins?
I think the subcommittee's, I think if this is going to be something Health and Safety picks up, we should just vote that we want them to pick it up, without saying how. Otherwise, it's really not assigned to a subcommittee. It came up when we finished, I agree with Katie, but I, I think if the school committee wants this committee to pursue it, we should just say we'd like you to pursue it, however it's worded.
Mayor Martin?
So, again, Member Karen came up another idea. So if the subcommittee is going to end superintendent, if the subcommittee is going to come up with an issue to the whole board, the whole committee, then the whole committee should direct the superintendent to bring it up at the next city school meeting, so that the committee addressed right away. So that's really a strong communication link, and the chair is there most of the time, so we can probably resolve very quickly.
Thanks, Mayor Martin. That's a great transition. I was actually going to suggest that we modify the motion to support the Health, Safety, and Facilities Subcommittee to continue discussion on this particular item, and don't put any limitations or requirements for anyone to attend, while simultaneously requesting that the superintendent and mayor follow up on activity on any kinds of projects or safety concerns that relate to all of our school buildings, and specifically the Four Corners So that is not the motion that's currently on the table.
Should be amended, or start over?
Would you, I think that the easiest thing to do is to take your previous motion from the table, remove your, yes, Member Ekstrom?
Maybe I'm just being obtuse here. Isn't the easiest thing for Katie to call a DPW and say, hey, when are you guys going to do that? And hang up? When they say it's on the schedule?
I actually think the easiest thing is for the superintendent to be doing that work for us.
I understand, I'm, I feel like a lot of work for a lot of people when there could be a phone call. I'm not saying, I get Bill's point, absolutely. It just feels like a lot of-
I feel like, oh. They would just follow up to the resident?
Sure. I don't know. Hi, when are you going to paint some lines on the road by Four Corners? It's in the agenda, we're trying to get there before winter snow flies. Awesome, thank you. I, I, maybe I'm being, perhaps I'm being flip, and I totally get-
Hello, DPW, can you hold?
Yeah. I totally get it, I mean-
You're answering questions of 15 other people at the moment.
Yeah, alright.
But that's the issue, is using the time and resources to answer an individual issue when it needs to work through a process, so you can take each piece and resolve it.
Okay. So-
I can withdraw my motion.
Great.
Would you like a different motion?
I think we need a different motion.
May I try?
Yes.
To recommend the Health, Safety, and Facilities Subcommittee add to its agenda clarifying school, road, and traffic safety, period.
Is there a second?
Yeah, will you repeat it?
It's the same thing, just ending at safety and putting a period, not saying anything about collaborating, just to keep it on.
Would you like to also request that the superintendent follow up with the mayor related to scheduling?
And request that the superintendent and mayor discuss this issue.
And request that the superintendent and mayor discuss this issue.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Yes, Mayor Martin?
I can't support this either.
Okay.
I would suggest that the, the, the simple motion be something like, "All subcommittees with issues report to the whole committee, who is to instruct the superintendent to bring the issue up at the next city school meeting." If we do not pass this, we could, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. So any further discussion? Susan Farber, could you read back the motion for us?
The Health, Safety and Facility Subcommittee add to its agenda clarifying school road and traffic safety and request that the superintendent and mayor discuss this issue.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the motion? Okay, anyone opposed? Mayor Martin opposed? Anyone abstain? Don, are you abstaining? Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Yes, Member Hollins.
I love the idea that this would be a topic for the, at a school mayor meeting. Will those meetings be posted so people interested in the topic can hear?
No.
No?
No, it's a working meeting. Able to live in a day.
Mayor Martin, you suggested another motion. Would you like to put this motion forward?
We just voted another motion.
We did, but you voted a broader motion. Or you stated a broader motion. Did you want to put that motion forward?
I'm just going to use the available time that I have to deal with issues for the city.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Okay, moving on to the last item on our agenda, we have a vote, a recommendation from the Health, Safety and Facility Subcommittee that the school committee requests that the full school committee and superintendent receive draft copies of the town council minutes per AG guidelines. Would anyone like to speak to this? Yes, Member Hollins.
There was a question about a city council vote, and several people on the school committee, including myself, were trying to clarify what happened at the meeting. And when you went on the town website where they post meetings, this was in August recently, the most recent minutes posted were from April, which is fine, but it would be really helpful if the city council would, would be really helpful if the city council would do what the school committee is doing now, which is say, draft unofficial minutes, and they're available right away. Post them so if we have a question, we're not all running around going and interrupting staff, trying to get public records. It's really simple, it's allowable, and I think it would be helpful to the school committee be able to see what the city council voted in their minutes if there's a question more quickly. So the idea was just to make a request that the draft unofficial minutes be posted.
Thanks, Member Hollins. So I jumped into discussion here, but is there a recommendation for this as a motion? Would anyone like to actually move this?
I'll move it.
Moved by Member Hollins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Ekstrom, thank you. Member Karen?
I, I agreed with this motion when it came through. What, the conversation started because we were discussing a Capitol project about safety, about fencing. And Member Hollins had gone searching for the minutes to find out what the decision had been, and there weren't any minutes to know. And so we were unsure. We were able to get clarity from superintendent and from the facilities manager, but it would have been easier to just have those minutes ahead of time. So it wasn't any sort of statement on anything except, it would be really helpful as a committee if we could know those decisions when they're made. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Martin?
The, that would be the clerks' department, the council clerk, the city clerk, which are one and the same, the administrative clerk, the assistant city clerk, and the hired city clerk for the council. So all of those positions have changed in the past 90 days anyways, with an election by the council, retirements, and resignations. So I would say they're catching up with minutes. I know the AG requires the minutes to be up there with the background information, but that's not the case. So I think your concern is with the council, certainly with the clerk's office, but in, in defense of this, this delayed reporting online of the minutes, I think, I think they're in the process of catching up. For the specific item, it would be the accountant. It could go to the accountant who knows, who gets the orders from the mayor about the Capitol votes and approval by the clerk, I mean, by the council, who then, an accountant sets up the account for that particular item. And so there was some discussion about the fencing Capitol. I think it was three years ago, there was some money for fencing. It was still listed on the authorized, unissued list, as I mentioned earlier with Stephen, that the, that list is inaccurate, unfortunately. And so we have to recreate everything for the past two years, and that's in, that's in the process of happening. So the, the fencing money, I don't really know. The minutes, the votes, the clerk should have the formal orders of every vote of the council in a separate folder, not in the minutes, and that's where you could find out if that was voted. And the, the accountant should have that information, but doesn't.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. I see no problem in requesting from the clerk's office that we receive draft minutes from the council meetings. I think it's, it's a fine request to make. I'm not sure that they're under any obligation to follow through with the request, so I think it's fine for us to put forward a request to receive some minutes when they're available. Member Hollins?
I'd like to make the motion to request the full school committee and superintendent receive draft copies of minutes.
Point of order. We have a motion.
Yes, point of order. Yes, we do.
Well, some of the wording of the motion is, it says it's from, it doesn't look like the motion.
Okay, thank you, Member Hollins. All, last comment, I do, I appreciate you, Mayor Martin, noting the changes in staffing and, you know, really approaching this issue with some compassion, and I appreciate that. It is important for us to have some patience with that. And again, I do think that it's fine for us to request copies of the minutes. Susan Farber, could you please read back to us the motion that's on the table?
It is, as Member Hollins said, a bit of a jumble right now. And I think it will say that the school committee requests that the full school committee and superintendent receive draft copies of the town council minutes per AG guidelines.
Thank you. Who moved it? Did you move it?
I think I did.
Susan Hollins, does, is that reflect what you intended?
What's on the agenda, the introduction has about eight or nine words that don't need to be part of the motion. So it just, to request, to request the school committee and superintendent receive draft copies of town council minutes as per turn of guidelines.
Okay. And is that in line with the second? Reuse the second?
I think it was, I, I don't remember, but it is in line with what I thought.
It's the same thing, it's just, there's a few too many words.
Okay. Member Karen, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to agree with you when you said that I have compassion for the fact that there's been a lot of turnover in the position. It was not a, you know, a criticism of the role. It just would make our lives a little bit easier while we're making decisions to have all of the information easily, so, and also their jobs easier, instead of us showing up individually, asking for information. It just seemed like a more smooth process, that's all. It wasn't a criticism, for sure.
Thanks, Member Karen. Okay, so there is a motion on the table. There was some confusion about the wording. Just to be formal, Susan, if you could repeat the motion.
To request that the full school committee and superintendent receive draft copies of the town council minutes per AG guidelines.
Thank you. Is that accurate? I'm seeing a yes. Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the table? Anyone opposed? And anyone abstain? Thank you, Member Alexander abstains. The motion passes. Thank you. I do have one new business item, and I do need a little help. This is coming out of the blue, Member Alexander. One of the items that was on our full committee calendar for today was the release of executive session minutes from the past that, per the law, would be released into the public. However, due to some coordination difficulties that I had, I was not able to get, basically, now, I'd like us to approve, to send the batch of executive session minutes to our attorney for review prior to bringing to the October school committee meeting for public release. And I don't have the exact dates. I apologize for that. The reason why I'm asking for review from the attorney is because my recollection, that has been the practice, to have the attorney review the executive session minutes. There are some exceptions to releasing executive session information into the public, and I believe that it is wise for us to have our attorney review them in order to advise us as to if there are any items in those executive session minutes that need to be retracted for any reason. Yes, Mayor Martin?
Yes, I believe the minutes, executive session minutes have to be released after six months if the issue is resolved or the topic is not discussed anymore. The, I don't think there's any exemption there except for the ability to redact. So, and then that might be what we'll hire an attorney to do, redact what might be personal.
So never seen the minutes.
Right, and that, Member Hollins suggests also that the board hasn't seen the minutes, so, but we want to make, instead of having just the chair make that difficult decision, the whole board would look at it.
And I'm coming to the board actually to take it out of our hands and put it into the hands of our attorney because it's really a legal question.
But if, if somebody, if a citizen wanted, did a freedom of information for all the executive session minutes beyond six months, then you would have to release them.
Unless our attorney advised and recommended something to be redacted. Exactly. So how could we come to the public table next month without having our attorney review that set of minutes prior to coming to the meeting? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Member Hollins?
Well, I think both issues make sense. The attorney hasn't been at all our executive session meetings, so the committee might want to look and just agree with what the minutes say, and then make sure the attorney, there's nothing in them. But I don't know how he could tell us what should be in our minutes if he wasn't even a attorney at all, so it seems like we need both.
I just want to clarify that I'm not asking that our attorney review our minutes and make sure that the minutes reflect what actually happened at the meeting. I would like our attorney to review the executive session minutes to ensure that there isn't something that could be publicly released that actually needs to be redacted. And I don't believe that any of us at the table really has the knowledge or background to do that. Member Ekstrom, did you have your hand up?
It's the fly.
Fly in my mouth.
Okay.
Just wanting flies.
Fly in the line. Member Alexander?
To answer the executive session minutes, 10 months ago, I went through a couple of years of executive sessions, and just reading a little more than half of the minutes that we had were conversations relating to individual citizens, personal issues, and of course, negotiations. So a lot of these minutes should remain protected for the rights and privacy. So having the city attorney review these minutes to ensure people's rights are protected, that should be happening.
Member Hollins?
I don't have any disagree with that whatsoever, but the body still has to approve its own minutes. Who, who, do you know what I'm saying? It's a different issue than legally reviewing them for legal issues. Don't we have to, we vote all our other minutes?
So yes, we do.
So I'm just wondering, who votes to approve the minutes?
We would approve them.
After the attorney sees them?
I think that I need to check the process in terms of, of the chain of events. I think that's a great question. So, I mean, I guess we'll delay another month, and that's fine. Are there any other new business items or new agenda items? Okay, seeing none. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. This is Mass. General Law, C30A213, and we are discussing Unit A, Unit C, and cafeteria workers.
So moved.
Thank you, Member Karen. Thank you, Member Ekstrom. And a rule call, please. For those watching, I don't believe that we will come back for a public vote on anything, so thank you very much. We will just come back to adjourn.
Committee Member Karen?
Yes.
Committee Member Ekstrom?
Yes.
Committee Member Hollins?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
I vote yes. Committee Member Nunez?
Yes.
We are in executive session.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield, call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield, visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield, you can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave, call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solastoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.